Okay, we're recording.
Thank you. Okay, today is March 24th, 2021. It is 6:00 PM. I'm Mayor Julia Johnson and I call the city council meeting to order. Will you all please stand with me to say the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we'll do roll call. I'll begin with Councilwoman Kinzer.
Present.
Excellent. Councilwoman Caspi.
Present.
Thank you. Councilman Allen.
Present.
Thank you. Councilman McGoffin.
Present.
Thank you. Councilman Loy.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilman DeYoung.
Present.
Thank you. And Councilman Owen.
Here.
All right, thank you. So moving on to the approval of the agenda, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move the agenda.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. I had a motion by Councilman DeYoung, seconded by Councilwoman Kinzer. Any comments, questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, items one through three, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items one through three.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Kinzer, seconded by Councilman McGoffin. Any comments, questions, concerns? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. All right, motion carries. So, um, we have a great evening tonight, starting with the swearing in of our new officers, three of them. I see them here. I'm very excited. I'm going to begin with Brady Moore. So Brady, you will raise your right hand. I, Brady A. Moore, do solemnly swear.
I, Brady A. Moore, do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the state of Washington.
And of the state of Washington.
And that I support the Constitution.
And that I support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Washington.
Of the state of Washington.
And I will, to the best of my judgment.
And I will, to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly, faithfully, and impartially.
Truly, faithfully, and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer.
Perform the duties of police officer.
In and for the city of Seidra Wully.
In and for the city of Seidra Wully.
Skagit County, Washington.
Skagit County, Washington.
As such are the duties prescribed by law.
As such as the duties prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. It's always good to have you on board, but now it's nice to make it official. So, thank you, Officer Brady Moore. Good grief. Okay, um, Officer Maxwell Rosser. I am saying your last name correctly.
That's correct. Yes.
Thank you. So, I, Maxwell R. Rosser.
I, Maxwell R. Rosser.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of Washington.
And of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and the laws.
And the Constitution and the laws.
Of the state of Washington.
Of the state of Washington.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly, faithfully, and impartially.
Truly, faithfully, and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer.
Perform the duties of police officer.
In and for the city of Seidra Wully.
In and for the city of Seidra Wully.
Skagit County, Washington.
Skagit County, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Be kind of nice to be able to shake hands though, wouldn't it?
Ready?
Yeah, I know. We'll get there. We'll get there. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Katie, do you want me to go by Katie? Hi, or Catherine?
Katie's good.
Okay. All right. So your right hand. Good to have you back, by the way.
I'm so glad to be back.
Good, thank you. I, Katie P. Wilson.
I, Katie P. Wilson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the state of Washington.
And of the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
Sorry about that. And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Washington.
Of the state of Washington.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly, faithfully, and impartially.
Truly, faithfully, and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer.
Perform the duties of police officer.
In and for the city of Seidra Wully and Skagit County, Washington.
In and for the city of Seidra Wully and the Skagit of, uh, the county of Skagit, uh, Skagit, Washington.
Perfect. As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Excellent. Congratulations, Katie.
Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome. Well, we'll be seeing you soon.
Thank you so much.
Um, so I do have all of your oaths here and you'll want to get together with Teresa to sign them and she'll make a copy for you so that you have them and we'll put these in your record then. All right. Welcome, all of you. Thank you. Okay, moving on, the next thing is, um, is George here? Do I see George?
I am here, Mayor.
Oh, excellent. Hello. How are you doing, George?
I'm doing great, thank you.
So we want to welcome you this evening. Thank you for coming and providing for us the annual update and presentation with, about regarding PUD. And if it's okay with you, I'm just going to turn it over to you so you can do your presentation.
That sounds like a great idea. All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Hopefully you can all see this screen. Mayor, do you want to nod if everything's, okay, you can see it, that's great. My name is George Sidoo. I'm the general manager at Skagit Public Utility District. And it's been nearly, or just over one year since I last visited. It was in person, but I came to your council meeting on, on March 11th, I think, of last year and gave a presentation. A lot has happened in the last year, not just at the PUD, but all over, as I know you're all aware. But I'm really happy to be back to give you an update on what's going on at the PUD. Uh, I'm going to, I have about nine slides and I'm going to talk about some of our projects, some current events, and then also how COVID has affected the PUD as well. So as I go through, feel free to unmute yourself and ask questions as we go along. I'll try. I, I want to be respectful of your time, so I want to go through it quickly, but also I'll pause every once in a while just to make sure you have an opportunity to ask questions. And then at the end, you can also ask questions as well. So moving on, I, one big thing that's changed at the PUD is the Board of Commissioners. These are our new commissioners as of January 1st of this year. And I know you recognize the person in the middle. Jermaine started last August as our Commissioner for District 3. And Andrew Miller on the right is our new Commissioner for District 1, which serves Anacortes and West Mount Vernon and South Mount Vernon. He was elected last year and started on January 1st. So two brand new commissioners and our most experienced commissioner, you probably know him as well, he's Joe Lindquist on the left. And most experienced at the PUD now means two years under his belt. As opposed to our most experienced commissioner last year was Al Littlefield and he had 36 years under his belt. So a lot of change, a great new board. All three commissioners are, are really great to work for. They're really inquisitive and, and Jermaine's really doing well as our commissioner. And we talk frequently and, and she's becoming a great resource for us. One of the, uh, well, I'm going to give you an update on some of our projects, but they're, they're rooted in our strategic plan. And what, what the goal is in our strategic plan is our investments that we're making in infrastructure. And that is definitely a focus at the PUD in, in the coming years. So I'm going to talk about some projects where those investments are being made. But before I do that, I want to just kind of give you a snapshot and how much we are spending in the next, or in our capital improvement program. So this is a, a graph of our capital improvement program as of our approved budget from 2020. And in the next five years, we are looking at spending about $110 million on our capital program. That's considerable. That's way more than we've spent in, in a five-year period on our capital program. Our 10-year investment is $155 million. So obviously we've got, we're really heavy, heavily loaded in this first five years. And that's going to be a part of my discussion. I'll explain to you what big projects we're working on. And tho- those major capital projects are the green bars. That's where most of our money's going. We do have department capital, which is spread and consistent throughout the years. But we also still do pipe replacement. We own over 600 miles of pipeline. And we need to have a routine replacement program to make sure those pipes stay in service. So that is always on our mind and always part of our program. So the, the big project for us coming up is a replacement of one of our two main transmission lines. One of the transmission lines, we call Judy Reservoir to Mount Vernon. And the other transmission line, just for reference, is Judy Reservoir to Seidra Wully. They head in opposite directions, obviously. The Mount Vernon Transmission Line, we're on phase two of this project. Phase one was done back in 2008 and in 2009. And if you can see my cursor, it's, it's this blue and white dash line down here in the bottom left of the, of the map. It goes through the city of Mount Vernon. But phase two picks up a College Way and, and snakes through the Nooka Champs Valley, through Clear Lake, up the hill and all the way up to Judy Reservoir. I think most of you have visited our reservoir up in, up in the mountains where our treatment plant is. And so that is the, is one end of our project. This is a, a really important project for us, a really important project for all of our customers. Our transmission lines, both of them are now over 50 years old and they are especially this one, going to Mount Vernon, is seen a lot of degradation. We have had breaks and leaks each year for the past couple of years. And so the timing is really great. We were already in design when we had recent breaks. And we are ready to build this now. It is a, a project that's 5.3 miles in length. It's a 36-inch diameter pipeline, which compared to the current pipeline, which is 24-inch, gives us a lot more capacity for growth. And, and now the cost. This is a $36 million project. It's one of the biggest projects we've undertaken. And it's a big portion of that capital investment that we're making in the next five years. I, I can tell you that our estimate was not at $36 million when we did this last year. When we went to bid in December, our estimate was lower than that. But we found, just recently especially, there's been a spike in raw materials and construction prices and we, unfortunately, we're paying the price for that. But we also feel it's really important to move forward with this project. As I said, we've had breaks on this line every year for the last couple of years and, and they are really stressful to our system. So we are going to move forward with this. We don't think rebidding it or waiting for a better bidding climate is the right action. So we're going to move forward. Uh, we have our funding in place. We have a contractor selected. We awarded this project two weeks ago to our contractor and we're going to start breaking ground, hopefully, in late summer. And the project should take about two years. So in 2023, we should have a brand-new transmission line, a very reliable and, uh, efficient transmission line going into Mount Vernon. So big project for us. And I'll just touch on this now, I was going to do a little bit later, but we are looking at both of our transmission lines. So this was the transmission line that was having problems, so we're addressing this first. Once this project is done, we will turn our attention to the Seidra Wully Transmission Line and look at that, doing a condition assessment and determining, uh, what we need to do to make sure that that line is reliable for the next 50 years as well.
Question, are we taking questions during your presentation or at the end?
No, you can, you can, you can do them as I go.
Awesome. So just a real quick one. So 5.3 miles, 36-inch pipe, uh, that's significant. I, I'm sorry, could you repeat the dollar value again?
$36 million.
Wow. And who is the contractor?
The contractor is Scarsella Brothers. So this, and it's a contractor that we've worked with before and they're a, a great contractor to work with.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll add just a, a little bit more to this. Uh, we have a partnership in this project. So Skagit County is our partner. Part of our, uh, pipeline alignment. So again, if you can see my cursor, I hope, I hope you can. Uh, right along, uh, Highway 9 going from Big Rock, uh, up towards Clear Lake, we are following the old railroad grade that used to go through there. And the county now owns that property and are wanting to develop that into the extension of the Centennial Trail. So we are partnering in that when we are done with our, uh, transmission pipeline project, the county will come in afterwards and there will be a pedestrian trail along a portion of this pipeline alignment, including a bridge across the North Fork of the Nooka Champs Creek to, uh, facilitate the trail being extended up into Clear Lake. So, uh, there are multiple benefits to this project and, and the county has signed on and they are a part of the, uh, overall scope of work. I will keep moving. Another big project that we have, uh, going on, we're in design right now, is our new campus. I don't know how many of you have been to our facility on Freeway Drive. It is also 50 years old. It was built in 1969. The portion that you see when you first drive in is newer than that. The two-story portion, it's, is only about 25 years old. But the single story is, is 50 years old and it is definitely showing its age and needing improvements. And we went through some pretty extensive studies of the building a couple of years ago. We looked at renovation, uh, which, based on the age and the condition of the building, the renovation would have pushed us into certain, uh, code, uh, improvements that we ended up, uh, with the decision of building a new, uh, facility because renovating the existing facility would have practically turned it into a new facility. So we decided to use the property that we already own on Freeway Drive. We own about 16 acres. And our existing facility is up here, uh, fronting Freeway Drive, but our new facility is going to be in the back southwest corner of our property. And we are going to try and use as much of the existing facility as we can to save money. So these buildings in blue are portions of our existing facility that we're going to keep. This small portion that's in, if you want to call that red, that's probably not correct, but that portion is the newer buil- building and we're going to retain that with the ultimate goal of doing a boundary line adjustment and separating this northern parcel. So our goal with the, with these fields in the back and this building in the front and, and some existing parking, we're hoping to separate this parcel and at some point be able to sell that to somebody that might be able to use it, uh, more than we can. Uh, we have, uh, we're running out of space is one of the issues as well with that building, besides just the condition of it. So we definitely need the space, but having a, a smaller facility with its own parking, Freeway Drive, frontage, access to College Way and, and the I-5, we feel like this is a, a marketable piece of property. So this was always in the design. And then, uh, for our new facility, we're just going to build it standalone when it's ready. Uh, we're hoping that will also be done in 2023. And when it is ultimately finished, we'll just be able to pick up and move and, um, call it our new home. So we're, we're excited about that. As I mentioned, we're, we're in design of that right now. And I will move on. What, a neat project that we have is, uh, is going on at our Division Street Reservoir. So this is in Mount Vernon. We built a new 6 million gallon reservoir at the intersection of Division Street and Digby. And with that, uh, reservoir, there is a small pump station located there. And we, we use it as a hub and we pump to various locations. And we also take water from Judy Reservoir at that location. When we built that in 2018, we plumbed it so that we could, in the future, at some point, install a small micro hydroelectric generation facility. We didn't know what we were going to do with it at the time. We didn't know what technology existed, but we knew that there would be an opportunity at some point in the future. Well, two years later, we had this vendor approach us in pipe and we are going to install a small unit. This is not it. This is just a rendering from their, from their website, but it will look very similar. And instead of just burning energy and, and pressure in the pipelines that go to that site, we'll be able to turn that energy into, uh, electric energy and, and use it onsite to offset some of our electrical costs. So this is a pilot program for us. There aren't a lot of places in our system where this is suitable, but Division Street was definitely one of them. And if it works here, we will continue to look at some other locations. The other locations that we are looking at are in Seidra Wully. Uh, there is the, uh, we also have a pressure-reducing facility at Rhodes Road and at Nelson. And so if this, if, if this works well, we'll turn our attention to other spots and again, try and generate some electricity to offset our costs and, and use our, uh, use our water wisely and, and try and use it to additional benefit. Um, continuing on, so those were projects that we're working on and, um, I want to touch on one thing. So this is the last conversation I had with Mayor Johnson. We, we talked about some, uh, water rights issues and some well issues. And so this is something that happened last year that I'm sure you're all aware of. Uh, but maybe, uh, might benefit from a, a, uh, Coles Notes version from me to help explain kind of what's going on. So you may have read or heard last year, I, there were articles in the Skagit Valley Herald. Uh, and if you read the Department of Ecology website, they were there as well. But there was an agreement made between Department of Ecology and Seattle City Light, who owns the dams upriver. And the agreement was to help facilitate some new construction in Skagit County to allow for some additional well drilling. And the agreement, uh, between Ecology and Seattle City Light was that Ecology paid about $1.4 million. Uh, and in exchange for that, Seattle City Light agreed to release, uh, well, the volume is, uh, 0.5 cubic feet per second. That might not, that unit might not mean a whole lot to you, but that's how they track the, the volumes in the Skagit River and through the dams. But, uh, Ecology purchased .5 CFS for $1.4 million from the Gorge Dam. And so what that means is that continuously now, there is water being released from the, from the dam into the Skagit River that is, uh, meant for mitigation for wells. And so what that means is that, as we all know, there is no well drilling, um, allowed in a, the majority of, of the Skagit Valley. Uh, that was through a, uh, Washington State, Washington State Supreme Court case in 2013. And what that did is shut down a lot of development, uh, especially upriver, for people to drill wells on their own property. So this additional water released from the dam was meant to help that situation. And what it did is create available water for about 400 homes. There's not an exact number. Uh, the best I can, uh, explain is that it's about 400 homes that can now use their wells when, before they couldn't. Uh, however, that number of 400 is, is broken down because there were about 340 wells that were drilled prior to 2013 that this water is mitigating for. So it's a, it's addressing, you know, it's, it, um, I don't want to misspeak, but it, there were wells drilled prior to 2013, which then became um, not compliant with the Supreme Court case. So this mitigation made those 340 wells compliant. So it took care of that previous issue. And then it also allowed for roughly 60 new homes, new wells to be drilled uh, in, in downstream of the Gorge Dam. Now, that may seem all well and good, but this map is really important and it's, uh, the focus of, I guess, what I'm trying to tell you is that the availability of those wells to be drilled, uh, is only between the reach of the Gorge Dam and Seidra Wully. So roughly where the Skagit PUD Pipeline crosses the Skagit River. That's about the extent. So between those two points is the only place that this mitigation agreement impacts. And then as you look further into it, what this map shows and tries to explain is that the green areas are the available land areas, uh, for new wells to be drilled. And so that reduces the, the available, uh, places where this agreement i- is effective. The brown, brownish areas are buffer zones. Those, but there is half-mile buffer zones around tributaries that feed the Skagit River. So anywhere within this buffer zone are excluded from the areas where you can drill a well, uh, as a part of this agreement. So there's a mitigation agreement, opening up more wells to be drilled. But there's multiple filters that are placed on that. You have the floodway, which is this blue dash uh, around the Skagit River. Obviously you cannot build in a floodway. And then if you take into account these buffer areas for these tributaries, you cannot build in these buffer areas. So in reality, what this agreement does is open up development between the Gorge Dam and roughly about to Hamilton. And I, I'm not sure how many people have taken advantage of this new agreement and, um, uh, have, have drilled wells for their property, but i- it is limited. It doesn't extend uh, beyond Hamilton, really. That, you know, I guess right here, you could see a little green area that isn't hatched or brown. So if you happen to own property there, that might be, uh, a place. But definitely downstream of our pipeline, it doesn't impact any of that area. So it is one solution to that Supreme Court case from 2013. But it definitely does not solve all of the development issues that are, uh, happening right now in Skagit County. So I, I hope I didn't, uh, confuse the issue or, or make your understanding of this any worse. I, I wanted to just summarize this for you. It's something that we pay attention to, uh, in a lot of detail because it impacts us. And I know, uh, for a lot of you, it may just be something you heard in passing. So I wanted to try and explain this. And then I guess I'll pause here to see if there are any questions or clarifications, uh, that might help.
George, I have a comment.
Okay.
Okay, this is Councilmember Kinzer. I feel like, um, this is really good news. This is opening up quite a bit of, um, development for people who have been waiting for this for a long time, um, prior to the previous court decision. And, um, it may not have opened up everything that everybody wanted, but we'll take this. We'll take this piece by piece and make this happen for these folks that want to develop this, um, their land. So I think this is really good news. And make this happen for these folks that wanna develop this um their land. So I think this is really good news. Thank you for. Presenting this to us.
Yes, thank thank you for that comment. In in just to clarify, so this, it's not something that the PUD was a part of. Th- this is an agreement made between Ecology and Seattle City Light and. Um, and other partners locally. Uh, it's just something, as I said, we pay attention to and and keep track of. But you're right, um, it 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 does help. Uh, you know, it is something, it it will help some people, I'm sure. And um, you know, when I talk to Mayor Johnson about this, you know. It it helps for you as the council to know about this because I'm sure you get approached by people and. Um, who may not understand the whole picture, but but this is one solution that is intended to help. And just so you know, the the PUD is helping on some other solutions. So the. The one solution that everybody supports is to connect rural properties to piped water. So if you can uh uh avoid drilling a well altogether, and if you can collect, connect. To a public water system, that is a solution that everybody will support. And so what we are working on at the PVD. It's off to the left of this map. Obviously, it's in, you know, down in uh the lower valley, but we are trying to. Uh, facilitate uh extensions of our pipelines into rural areas so that people can. Use the the property that they own and connect to a public water system because that is really their only choice at this point. It's their only solution. And it also solves some problems for people that are on wells who don't have uh uh good quality water as well. So we are working on those solutions. But to clarify, it is not the PUD funding those pipeline extensions. We cannot use our rate pairs money to build pipeline extensions in the hopes that people hook up. What we are doing is asking the state legislator legislature to fund these projects on. What we think is that this is an issue uh created uh. Well, through lawsuits, but partially by the state. And so we would like the state to be. A partner in the solution and the biggest partner they can be is to help fund some of these pipeline extensions. So. In the last few years, we've been going back to the legislature every year to ask for money for additional pipeline extensions. We're, we've submitted a request this year. We're hoping that the capital budget for the state comes out this week. And if we're lucky, we'll get some funding for a pipeline on Little Mountain Road. Uh, that will run into some rural areas and help solve some issues there. And our hopes is that we do that with other projects. We have a number of other projects slated. That we will again ask for money from the state to contribute to help um help solve some of the rural uh property issues that we have. So I'm I'm glad that this was helpful and if if you have any questions uh. You know, what even if you think of them afterwards, feel free to reach out to me. And I'll be, I'd be happy to respond uh via email or phone call as well because I know this is a really interesting topic. Um, and then lastly. Covid. So as a utility, I'm sure you're all aware of this as well. Uh, for the last year, we, under the governor's uh proclamations, we have not shut off any water services, uh water. Electric, gas, uh all utilities have been under this moratorium and and we have abided by it and will continue to do so. It it's now been extended until July thirty first. So there are no water shut offs up until July thirty first. Uh, what we've also done is waived all penalties and late fees. Obviously, if you're not paying your. If you don't have to pay your bill and you're not in fear of getting shut off, you're just going to accumulate those fees. And uh over the past year, we've accumulated about a hundred eight thousand dollars in in late fee and penalty waivers. And then accounts receivable is our biggest change as a result of Covid. So with with not having uh water shut offs. We do have a number of customers that are carrying outstanding balances. Which we never used to be an issue for us. So. The amounts that I listed here, we have about, this is a district wide. So out of twenty six thousand customers. We have about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in in outstanding bills that are over ninety days old. And well, two hundred and seventy thousand that are over thirty days old. And to put that into perspective, those amounts are about ten times uh what they normally are. So January of twenty twenty, you could basically just knock zero uh. You know, the the third zero off this first group of three numbers would that and that would be where about where are we would normally be. Sorry. Um, and and of note, out of twenty six thousand customers, these accounts receivables really only apply to about a thousand customers district wide. So. Uh, our customers are doing great as as a community. As a county, I think we've we've done really well. I think uh. You know, there's been limited uh impact with Covid in terms of, at least from a water utility perspective, in terms of not being able to pay bills. And our customer service representatives are working with all of our customers, those thousand customers that are having trouble paying their bills. Well, you know, there's payment plans. Uh, we want to talk to them, at least making some kind of payment. The last thing we want is for this moratorium to be lifted. And then for our customers to have this really large bill at the end of it. I think that's really gonna cause them to struggle. So. We're trying to get just any any payment that we can to just help ease that pain at the end of it. But when the mo- moratorium is lifted. Um, we're, we're going to have to put people on payment plans. We don't, you know, we're a public utility. We don't have the. Uh, flexibility of of anything but to collect the the bills that are outstanding. And the last thing we want is to then have to resort to shutting off water for non-payment. So. Payment plans uh, you know, are a priority for us. Uh, additional funding from the federal government. We're hoping with the new funding that was provided from the from the federal government that we may be eligible or our customers. Maybe eligible for some funding to help with some of these outstanding balances and and that remains to be seen. I know the the end users or the end recipients of that money isn't quite defined yet. And so we are. Um, waiting and we will definitely be having conversations with all of our local cities and the county. Uh, we are. In discussions with uh Doug right now, just in terms of how the city can help us as well, and we really appreciate you. Uh, offering some help and we'll, we'll work through those details, but. Uh, for the most part, we've fared well and I think it's, you know, we just really want to help our customers that. That need the help and it's not a lot of them and it's not a lot of money. And so any amount that we have, uh, we want to try and get it to our customers. So. That is our impact on Covid and. That is my last slide. Yeah. So this, this is uh the phone number at our office. You can reach me there and. That's my email address as well and feel free to reach out and ask questions about either anything I talked about tonight or. Anything water related. Be happy to talk to you about it.
All right. Thank you, George. Um, greatly appreciate the update. Um, is is there? Any questions or comments for George before he closes? Okay, hearing that, I really appreciate you coming tonight and I look forward to our next quarterly meeting. Greatly appreciate PUD and all you're doing, George.
Yes, thank you very much for the opportunity. This is uh great that I'm able to do this and and get in front of you and and open it up for conversation. So thanks for the opportunity.
Have a good night.
All right. Thank you. Bye.
Hey, uh, next on the list is something that is kind of bittersweet and that is um. I have for Brenda Kinzer on behalf of the council and also the citizens of Seidrooli. Um, a plaque that I'm going to show. So Brenda, I know you'll be collecting this on Friday when you turn in your um iPad. But on it, it says in recognition of outstanding service, Brenda Kinzer. Councilmember Ward Three, City of Seidrooli, January twenty fourteen to March twenty twenty one. In grateful appreciation for your outstanding leadership, dedication and commitment to excellence these past eight years, three months on council. And as acting mayor pro tem in twenty seventeen. Your love and compassion for the city has impacted the community and made it a better place to live. With grateful appreciation on behalf of the citizens, the council and myself, thank you, Brenda.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. That means so much to me. It really does. Um, may may I say my?
Absolutely.
My part of it. Um, yeah, it's really bittersweet for me right now. Um, I have enjoyed my time in the council so much. Um, we've really made so many positive impacts on the community during my time on council and. This meant a lot to me that my um residents had the confidence in me to. Help see all the things happen that happened within the city and. We made a lot of progress. We really did and I'm I'm very thankful for that. And I hope the city will still. Be very willing to work with me on the Northern State Hospital Cemetery Project. As you know, that's my passion. I I feel so strongly about that. And I, I, I really want to let you know I. Pledge to continue working on that and hope that I can work with the city on making. Progress happen however it can through grants, through more funding of any kind. We'll start up our nonprofit again and make that become a reality. And just make that place glow as a place to recognize all the patients that were buried there that were. That were one-time patients of Northern State Hospital. That's that's biggest passion. But I, number one, I want to thank all the the residents of Seidrooli for having confidence in me to. Um. To represent them and. Carry through the goals of the city of Seidrooli and I hope I can on. Open this up for a really great person to take my place. And I hope, I hope, um, I'd be really willing to work with that person to. Give them some ideas that I have and so forth. So, um, I don't know. Not much more to say now. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, you're welcome. Like, you know, I I think all of us would agree that you did um. In a very gracious and powerful way, represent the voice of the people, not just of your ward, but also of Seidrooli. You did have a huge impact and those are things that you can really be proud of. Um, I feel very honored that I've had the opportunity to sit with you alongside on the council and to work on a lot of these projects. So um Brenda, I know, but but the service work you're doing, I know will not stop here. Um, you're not that kind of person. You're going to keep going. So uh, thank you. I do have a little bit of information that um I I received and and that is that the. Um, consultant who's been working with uh Nathan and the city regarding the um. The cemetery up there. She's going to move forward with the permitting. Um, Covid has really put a hamper in a lot of people's um abilities to move forward with them.
Of course.
Commitment, and then this was one of them. And so um, not to worry about the grant, you know, the grant is getting ready to expire, but we're going to extend that through October. So that'll be good news so that we can use that and um we'll be able to continue to move forward with the work, getting that fence up and.
Good news.
Yeah, so, thank you, Brit.
No, thank you so much.
Okay, um, with that, we will move on to staff reports and I will begin with. Assistant Fire Chief Frank Wagner.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, thanks for having me this evening. Uh, Chief Klinger is on the east side. Uh, just a couple of things from us over here. We're uh. In the planning stages of the hundredth year anniversary for the Volunteer Association and the Fire Department here in Seidrooli. Which will happen May twenty first of this year. Which will also be Chief Klinger's uh last day with us before uh he retires at the end of the month. Uh, so we're hoping to uh have a little celebration and some cake for. All the years that he's given us and the positive impacts he's made for all of the folks that have worked with him around him and. And in the community here. So uh it's going to be a really tough time for us to give up someone with that kind of experience, but. Uh, a great celebration for him and all he's done. Uh, Covid numbers, uh, we are at a a a low that we haven't seen since uh before October. Uh, the thought is we're going to be under a hundred cases per hundred thousand folks by the end of the week is what we were told uh on Tuesday at our meeting. Uh, there was a little bit of a spike today, but things are looking good. Uh, vaccinations are uh uh increasing. I think we're in the. Number seven county in the state and uh. We're full steam ahead as far as uh helping with the vaccinations and we have some folks here that have been volunteering over at the site or or willing to when they have the. Uh, allocations of those doses available. Uh, as you see in front of you on the packet, we have an information only item uh with a director's report from a director. Uh, Josh Polonia over at Skagit EMS and wanted to point out some recognition uh there for uh Mayor Johnson as uh. The chair of that board uh that uh works for nine one one, some of the things that they and the EMS worked on last year. With uh Pro QA, with our dispatch center upgrades, uh the quickest routes project. And then some accolades for some of our own folks. Uh, Dylan Whistle is recognized in there as delivering a baby in the back of one of our ambulances. So a great positive there and some recognition as well as thirteen folks down at the high school that assisted in a cardiac uh. Resuscitation uh effort that uh brought back one of our uh. Longtime teachers down there that uh is very well respected and and is uh doing well as of to this day. Uh, and that was the Dr. Ron Richardson Life Saving Award that uh was depicted in that uh report. Other than that, uh, I have nothing else to report and uh thanks again for. All that you uh have done on that board, Mayor. It uh has really helped us uh. Go in the right direction with some of the things we needed to do with this ALS transition and the EMS uh partnerships that we have.
Thank you, Frank. I appreciate that. Appreciate all the work that you have done as well. Thank you. Um, just along those lines, he uh Frank was talking about um the great work that was happening as far as the vaccinations and the testing and I want to give a shout out. To the Skagit County Health Board. For a year, they've been going strong and they have done, as Frank said, we're number seven in the state. And um they have been going strong and working very hard to not only. Provide those tests and provides of that vaccinations, but also to do great education. They've been easy to work with. We can pick up the phone. We can make a call. Um, they're very responsive. Um, we're very fortunate here in Skagit Valley to have an excellent team that works together to do the things and and impart what. Um, Assistant Fire Chief Frank was talking about. So, thank you, Frank. Okay, Police uh Police Chief Lynn Tucker.
Right. Thank you, Mayor. Um, so you guys got to see the best part of uh. Uh, Covid for us this uh this last year and a half or however long it's been, ten years. I don't know how long we've been in Covid now. Like a long time, but um we've. You've seen a lot of people, a lot of new people coming into our ranks. Um, with the next two that we've got coming up. We've got, um, we offered a job and we've got Seth Bass on board. He's working and waiting for his uh academy date. And then we just offered a job to a Rachel Humbert. Uh, she's uh already got the police academy. So hopefully, we're going to get her on board in May after she finishes some testing. And really what that comes down to is we're going to have ten faces. Ten new police faces in the department. Um, you know, by the end of this uh this cycle. Maybe even eleven depending on uh some other things going on. But um. That means this police department has uh substantially changed and all of that's happened since we started locking down for Covid. So in the course, a little more than a year or there, a year or thereabouts, um, we will have. Added ten people to our department's ranks that we just didn't see and that's just incredible. Um, we've never seen anything like that and I can honestly say they're a wonderful bunch of uh wonderful bunch of folks. So uh we're pretty happy and excited and I'd like to thank the council, the mayor, everybody for helping make that happen. It really um was a big part of uh or the citizens of Seidrooli played a huge part. In um getting Prop One through Forest to get that done. So um. If you just, if you'd have told me a year ago or a year and a half ago, that at some point we would have been hunkering down. Um, hiding uh from Covid for a year and that I would have ten new bodies at the end of it. I would have just, I I would have thought you'd need to get your marbles checked. Um, but um it's happened and it's incredible and I like to thank everybody that made that happen. Um, one other thing I've got, we've had a busy week. Um, we had four of our officers assisted on a CPR. Um, earlier this week and um when I was talking to Sergeant Sorsdall about it, she said it was a really good partnership. The. The paramedics that showed up to tend to the patient could focus on doing their life-saving part of it. And they just needed um the extra bodies there to do the CPR, so we had four people, I think, one or two of them were uh. Either brand new or trainees and they actually uh were performing CPR on a subject. The subject unfortunately did not survive. But uh I was very proud of my crew and glad we can help out the fire crew so they can do uh the the real uh the real life-saving attempt. Um, but uh, other than that, we chased a bad guy through town kind of and it's just been kind of a weird week. Um, I'm kind of glad it's nearing an end. And Mayor, that's all I have.
Well, thank you. Um, Director of Building and Permits, John Coleman.
Coleman?
Yes, yes, go ahead. Councilwoman Kinser?
I'm here for Chief Tucker.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much for all you do, Chief Tucker. Um, I am so glad that you have the. The number of new officers that you do now, that's gonna make a huge, huge difference in the city and law enforcement. I'm just so happy for that and I am so happy that you have the people in place to do life-saving efforts that you do. Um, it's really just amazing to me that the city of Cedar Willy Law Enforcement is able to do what they do, so I. I give you huge, huge thank yous.
Well, thank you, ma'am. It wouldn't work without uh you all's support, so um you're making that happen as well, but thank you.
All right, very good. Um, back to John, John Coleman.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Uh, well, for the first time in in recent memory, I don't have any uh agenda items for the council to review, so. You get a break this week, um. But yeah, next, at the next uh next city council meeting, I will have two new things on the agenda for you, but. The Planning Commission uh finished up its work on the electronic reader boards issue. That blossomed from just, you know, looking at um how we handle them in CBD to uh. Some bigger rules for uh reader boards and uh, you know, the uh digital signs throughout the city. Uh, to tighten up the regulations on those, so tho- those regulations were. Uh, recommended amendments from the Planning Commission will be at the council at the next meeting. Um, so will a uh proposed minor amendments to the Shoreline Master Program. These are amendments that are part of a uh. A required update that the Department of Ecology has uh, but. There is, requires all jurisdictions to do. Um, since we just updated ours in two thousand sixteen. Uh, they're they're just minor amendments, so that shouldn't be too much uh to look at for you. And finally, uh, we had a planning committee of the the council. Meeting ahead of this council meeting and Councilmember Kinser will give a report on that discussion. And that's all I have for the council tonight, unless you have any questions for me, I'll step out of the way here.
Thank you, John. Moving on to Director of Public Works, Mark Freiberger.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Yes, uh, just a few things. I I have a presentation on the ADA Transition Plan in a few minutes. So I reserve most of my time for that, but I did want to report that uh our wastewater treatment plant electrical improvements is going well. Uh, we had our first major shutdown today and it went smoothly. Uh, and uh so we operated on temporary power for several hours while we. Uh, pulled some wires and set some things in place so that we uh can uh do the major. Uh modifications to some of the switchgear and the and the plant water building. And so the contractor will be doing that work over the next two weeks or so. And then we'll have another shutdown to put the uh permanent equipment back in place, so everything is moving well on that project. Uh, also, today, uh, we did receive a draft of the uh agreement with BNSF Railway for the undercrossing. Uh, which we've been waiting on sort of with weighted baited breath for quite a while. Yeah, I reviewed that and sent it off. To Nikki Thompson for her review and uh the mayor and Doug were copied on that, so. I didn't see any uh major problems with it. There will be some things I'll discuss with the railroads representative. In the next couple of days, some clarifications, but that looks like that's ready to move forward. Uh, that does to design uh divide the project basically into two parts, a phase one, which would drive the piles and purchase the. Bridge deck itself that would be stored until a late, a future phase two, uh when we have funding for the roadway itself. Uh, at which point BNSF would set the uh new uh structure in place, so. Uh, that's moving along okay. They're planning to start uh piling uh installation on May the first. And uh the other thing I wanted to just mention as a Skagit Trail Builders has been working uh the last couple of weekends out at Homestead Park. Uh, preparing to do some trail building around uh Thompson Pond and I'll reserve the rest of my time for my presentation. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mark. Um, Director of IT, Bill Chambers.
We've uh got the Cemetery Management Software, RFP, uh published and out for um proposal submittals. The uh Avidex is uh in the process of ordering parts for, excuse me, for Phase two point one. Of the Council Chambers AV upgrade, so we're still likely six weeks out. Uh, for having that completed. Um, working with Skagit Net uh on uh a economic development grant for fiber. And uh, we had our first meeting of the Technology Advisory Group. The internal group uh and discussed the Iwork uh permits portal and several other current and planned technology projects. And uh just lots of work on uh posting surplus items on public surplus vehicles, heavy equipment. Printers and things like that, and that's about it.
All right, thank you, Bill. Financial Manager Jill, oh Jill Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Um, we are researching the latest information on the America Rescue Plan Act funding. Um, the initial list has us at two point six million that's designated for the city of Cedar Woolley. With the caveat that this amount may change before final approval. Um, we are looking back over two thousand twenty um at any revenue losses um such as rental income in the Parks Fund. Um, or any other items that might qualify for reimbursement and as we know more specifics, we will bring that back to council. We are also working on the formatting of the city's annual financial report. To incorporate changes that the state auditors have made for the most uh current reporting year. And the new requirement, which I did mention, I believe, before puts in place. And the new descriptions for cash that we are holding, so rather than just showing cash on our s- uh state financial report, we now need to break that out. Into uh different categories that show levels of previous commitment that may have been made by law. Contracts or by our own ordinances. And while this requires a lot of extra work to pull this together, it will be a great tool for providing clear information to our stakeholders. Regarding our true financial position and we also look forward to presenting that information at future meetings. We are continuing to research the payment side of the new Iworks online planning and permit system. Um, so that when John and his team are ready to go live with that, we will hopefully have everything in place from the financial side. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Um, City Attorney Nikki Thompson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have anything this evening except to say thank you to Councilmember Kinser for her service.
Thank you. Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
City Supervisor Doug Merriman.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. Uh, a few things for you. Uh, the first is our finance director position. As you may have heard through the grapevine, uh Mark Roberts, who had accepted our position for finance director and had. Uh, come up from California and fill out his paperwork uh the day before his start date, he had a change of heart. And let us know that he was gonna go back to California and uh was it gonna be coming to work for us. So I had uh some conversations with them. He had some family different things and things that he was thinking about. Uh, was kind of interested if the city would wait a few weeks to see if uh things cleared up for him, but uh. Being that we'd already had a couple of time extensions, I talked with the mayor about it. And we decided it was probably best that we continue looking for another candidate. And I did talk to Mark about that and we're gonna be moving on uh to phase two now and uh. So you'll still see the advertisements for that position out there. And uh we're doing uh a lot of shaking of the trees to see if we can get someone to come in here that's a good qualified candidate. Uh, we had interviewed some others, a couple of those have moved on. Uh, so we are kind of back at square one, but you know, as uh the mayor said, uh. Sometimes one door closes and it's just so that other door can open and the right person comes in here with us, so we'll be looking forward to that. Uh, as Jill mentioned, uh, we are working on the annual report. Uh, there's one thing, you know, they say there's always death and taxes and you can add a third, there's always something the state auditors are gonna make us do that's new. And so they have a a list of things they've given us on how we need to format. Uh, our financial statements and those are good things. It allows for a lot more transparency and. If we ever go to uh issue bonds or analysts are looking at our financial statements. It truly does give them a lot better picture and makes our financials look more like a company in the private sector. There's been a big difference between governmental and private sector financial statements, so it's a good thing and it does keep us busy. Uh, one thing that uh George talked about tonight with Skagit PUD. Is uh he had been having some conversations with Mayor Johnson and had talked about the delinquency list. That he put up there on the board tonight. Uh, we've seen a little bit in our own not quite as bad or as large as Skagit PUD has seen. On some of their delinquent accounts, but uh he was asking around, as you heard tonight, to see if there's any relief sources. So Mayor Johnson did ask me about that. We've done some research on some of the CARES funding residuals that are out there and also looking at this new package. So what George is talking about is there might be a chance we can put some money into that. Uh, as long as the customers were providing relief to are actually in our city limits. So we're putting together some paperwork where there's an application and if people have amounts that are delinquent, say more than sixty days or ninety days. We would be able to offer them some one-time uh relief financially on that. To help those that are struggling making their utility payments. So we'll be moving forward with that. That'll probably require us to have an interlocal with Skagit PUD, so you'll see us coming back when we get. The paperwork and everything lined up on that. Uh, some of the projects I'm working on right now is uh one is our employee policy manual. Uh, our last update to that was thirty-one years ago, so we are uh working on that. Nikki, thank you, has been uh putting a draft together for us. And uh she and I are going over it. The mayor has a copy as well and we are working with a woman named Cara Turner. She is a HR consultant up in Bellingham. I've worked with her in the past. Uh, it's nice to have an HR set of eyes, human resources, looking at that. And I'm talking to her as well about my second project and that's performance evaluations. Right now, the city does not do those for its staff, but we will be starting to do that this year. And so we have the forms and everything drafted up. Uh, but I'm talking to Cara about coming in and actually doing staff training. So that uh they know exactly what things we should be doing when we're uh looking at setting goals and looking at performance of our staff. So we'll be moving forward with that. And then the third and last item, the kind of to let you know about on my project board behind me. Is leadership training. Uh, I have contacted WCIA, they're a a large insurance firm in Washington. That does work with cities and they have a very robust training program. And I called a couple of people I knew there and uh they have allowed us now, we can, even though we're not one of their customers. We can register and sign up for their training courses. And they have a leadership credentialing program that is just for cities. And it's a great leadership program for new leaders that we're trying to bring up through the ranks and also for seasoned ones. Uh, that have been here for quite a while, so it's, it'll be a good program for us to move that, making sure that we're doing. The correct leadership steps and promoting from within that we can for those new up and coming managers as part of our succession planning. So we have a lot of projects and things going on right now, but they're good things and I think they'll be really good for the city. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Dan. And yeah, let's take a look at that board because I think you only mentioned maybe two or three of the items that you're working on. Um, Doug is actually remarkable and I I gotta say, you know, I and the city are very grateful that you're here. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Mayor.
Um, moving on to council reports and I will begin with Councilwoman Cancer.
Um, first thing I'd like to say is we have, we had a um playing. Um, planning meeting today and we have no further action from the the planning on. Of what's not council, but. Planning Commission. Yes, definitely, um. We have no further action tonight with that, but there may be further action that takes place in the future where um. Steady with what the Planning Commission recommends to us at this point. And once again, I'd like to state that um. Wow, it's really bittersweet tonight. This is my last night with the council. Um, it's really been a pleasure. It's been a pleasure with working with all of you that are here at this point. It's been a pleasure working with everybody in the past, Mayor Anderson, Mayor Wagner. It's really been an experience where I've learned a lot and I think we've really accomplished a lot. We really accomplished a lot for the city and I'm very thankful for that and I am grateful for the opportunity that my um. Residents gave me by putting me into this position. I'm very thankful for that and. I, I just want to say it's been an amazing experience. Thank you so much. To everyone for this experience. We've done a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Um, i- in the beginning, I think what you were trying to say, it was the um planning and council, planning committee. And it was the non-conform use of regulations.
Yes, my tongue was tied.
Yeah, well, you have a lot on your heart and mind right now, so no worries. Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Joelle and Kesty.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things tonight, but first, I want to thank Brenda for her years of service. I appreciate having Brenda as a mentor and a colleague on the council and I wish you nothing but the best because you deserve it. Which brings me to tonight's suggestions. Like Brenda, the mayor and council's love for Northern State Cemetery runs deep. And in light of the ongoing vandalism that has occurred in the past couple of months to the Brick Memorial. And my discussions with Mayor Johnson, it would be nice to implement a plan from nineteen ninety-four. That was in a Courier Times article that slated, there was supposed to be a bronze plaque mounted. On the entry of Arbor. The plaque was to be in memory of the hospital's patients who were buried at the property. Due to the multiple attacks on the Brick Memorial that has already lost one of its columns and the resources it continues to use up. I'd like to suggest that the city crew remove the Brick Memorial and replace it with the bronze plaque that was discussed in the plan from nineteen ninety-four. On the entry of the Arbor and take the current plaque from the Brick Memorial and place it with the Northern State exhibit and the museum.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Kesty. So I'm wondering, is this something that perhaps you would like for us to. Further discuss and kind of um formulate a plan, working alongside the plan that Nathan already has. Because he is gonna be putting a fence up there, we have the funding for that, but doing that at the council working retreat. But doing that at the council working retreat, is that something that if I put that on the agenda, would that work for you?
Well, um in honor of Brenda and her love for Northern State. If the council saw fit, I I'd like to make it a motion to see it happen.
Okay, um so what is your motion?
So my motion would be to uh suggest that the city or the city crew remove the Brick Memorial. And replace it with the bronze plaque um to go on the entry of the Arbor. That will be my motion.
Second, Councilmember DeYoung.
Madam Mayor.
Yes. Uh Councilwoman Kinsler.
Madam Mayor, may um make a second to this, so a heartfelt motion.
Okay, we will do that. Okay, so we had a motion by um Councilwoman.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Allen here.
Yes.
I am not opposed to this, but can we get a cost before we can? Jump, jump into it. I mean, a rough estimate.
That's a good idea. Um so moving forward with this, we already have the money for the fencing that's going to be going up. I am unsure what kind of funding that we will have for the bronze plaque, but.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Uh when the city acquired the cemetery property, a pool of money came with the transfer for maintenance and I suggest pulling it from that fund.
Okay, um I don't know how much is left in that fund, to be honest with you, Councilwoman Kestie. I don't know what's left. We'd have to check into that. Um yes, Doug, Mayor.
Yeah, initially, when we acquired the cemetery, we got fifty thousand dollars that we're holding in a cemetery endowment fund. And uh at the time, five thousand years being put into maintenance of the cemetery. I think we have about forty thousand dollars of that initial fifty still remaining in the endowment fund.
So how much is the fencing going to be? Because I know that the fencing, I think, is coming out of that endowment fund.
Yeah, I would have to check on that number for you to to see.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Kinsler.
Is the fencing not coming, coming out of the grant funding for the step from the state?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Okay, Madam Mayor, Councilman Allen again.
Yes.
If there is, in fact, forty-five thousand dollars, I have, I'll I'll rescind my turn. Uh you know, I mean, if the money is there, by all means, we should pursue it. But I know a bronze plaque is not inexpensive, so.
There's also a plaque on the uh brick wall itself and that should be. Um maintained and also put with the bronze plaque. Um Mr. Freiberger, can you tell us, so do you know how much the bid came in for the fencing that's going to be going up?
I believe it was twenty-three thousand or so is the grant amount. And I think we're, I think we're okay with that particular uh grant funding the fencing. Um I I haven't seen um the nineteen ninety-four proposal for what we're, they're doing. I I I don't know what it looks like, if it's some kind of. Uh thing that mounts underneath of the the Arbor going in is what I understand. Uh that could cost us five to ten thousand, I would think, but uh again, I haven't seen the actual layout on that. And I think the the funds that are available in the endowment are probably sufficient. Uh the council always has the option to use their their reserve fund as well on things like this, so. Uh there should be, should be adequate funds for doing this.
Okay, so let's move forward then with the motion. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Freiberger. Let's move forward with with the uh motion. Um that. Yeah, yes, Councilwoman Kinsler.
Um. May I, on my last night here, make a statement, please?
Absolutely.
Um I feel if we don't have it in the cemetery fund, let's please pull it out of the reserve fund. As you all know, the Northern State Hospital Cemetery is fantastic. And I really, really, really want to keep moving forward with the preservation of that site. Um I don't know if y'all know this, but our vision with the Northern State. Preservation group, which we once started and could not keep going at that time as an nonprofit. Was to have a individual plaque for every human being buried on that site. With their name and their year of birth and their year of death. And I hope that we can somehow through grants and so forth, through nonprofits, keep that vision going. Because I think that would be amazing to have every single individual on that site memorialized. As a human being they were, but. That was standing because that's in the future and that's something we still can pull off. Having this individual plaque would be a huge, huge, huge. Memorial to all the people who reside there at the cemetery. And if we need to pull it from the reserve, the council fund, if we need to pull it from the cemetery fund. Let's just please make this bronze plaque happen. I think it would be absolutely amazing. It would be a fantastic memorial for this place. Um we need to keep moving forward. There are fifteen hundred individuals buried there. Were currently not recognized. And this is my passion, make sure that they are eventually recognized for who they were. So um with that said, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um any other comments? Okay, here and then we had a motion by Councilwoman Kestie, seconded by Councilwoman Kinzer. To um remove the big brick wall and add a bronze plaque to the fencing. Um using funds from the um monies that were designated for the cemetery. And if necessary, monies from the um discre- the council's discretionary fund. And I'd like to add to it too, that the plaque that is on the brick wall also be added to the fencing. Does that work for everybody? Any comments, questions?
I thought part of the was to have that other plaque put in the museum.
Yeah, that was going to be my suggestion.
I agree with that.
Because it's um, it would be redundant to have the two there. And then it would go to the museum next to the Northern State Exhibit of what had been there and it explain it.
I agree with the, I agree with the um part of that existing um plaque going to the museum.
Okay, I guess um it's, it was another group of individuals who actually put that there. And I would say that we would need to try to touch base with them to make sure that that is something that they are okay with. If it's possible to even do that to reach somebody, um I don't know that we really have that discretion just to pull it down and put it where we wish. I think that we ought to talk to those who put it there. Um thoughts?
I, I, Madam Mayor, I agree with that. Um. Mister Carl Hudeman was the, the teacher who spurred this whole project initially back in the day. And we should really, yeah, maybe we really need to do touch base with them. To make sure it's okay that it goes into the museum, seeing that the existing structure that they created. Is now degrading to the point that we can barely keep up with it and keep it maintained. Um so yeah, let's touch base with them. I'm in agreement with that.
Agree.
Okay, so with the motion that I laid forth and um adding then that we will. Make a decision.
Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember DeYoung.
Yes.
Um yes, could you restate the motion a full, please?
Okay, so it is a motion to remove the brick wall and add a bronze plaque to the fencing that will be put in by the. That have been designated for that cemetery from the state. And if necessary, if funds run out, um monies will be pulled from the council discretionary fund. Okay, any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Very nice. All right, um. That was a lot of work. Okay, moving on to Councilwoman Chuck Owen.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh I don't have anything really. I just wish uh Brenda well and say happy trails to her.
All right. Um Councilman Kevin Loy.
Thank you. Um I've been on the county parks board for a long, long time. And you may or may not know that there's a fair amount of new trail building going on up in Northern State. And one of the things that's happening is we're getting considerably more people coming up to Northern State and, you know, go trail walking. And that's a positive thing for Cedar Woolly. It kind of makes a positive thing for Cedar Woolly's image. So the, so that's a really good thing that a lot of people aren't aware of. Um another thing I'd like to mention is a couple of weeks ago, I was on my way home and on Edward R. Murrow and I stopped. There was uh somebody laying on the half on the sidewalk, half on the grass and I called nine-one-one. And uh the fire department was there, had to be within less than two minutes. It was just that they just did an amazing job. So it, somebody, some lady showed up and poked the guy and he started moving, so I don't know what became of it, but at least he wasn't dead. But the fire department responded near instantly, so they did an excellent job. So that's what I got.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Councilman Loy. Um Councilman Brendan McGoffin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um I just want to thank Councilwoman Kinzer for her service on the council and to the Cedar Woolly people. And I wish you the best and it's been an honor to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um Councilman Carl DeYoung.
Thank you, Brendan. I appreciate it.
Uh can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
Excellent, thank you. Uh I just wanted to uh acknowledge uh the uh increased emphasis patrols. That our uh police department is doing and uh with an education effort with folks about twenty-five miles an hour. Um been hearing positive feedback within Ward Six and wanted to uh en- encourage that. And to also show appreciation for that. And um I just wanted to uh um say to Brenda, thank you so much. Um you know, you're a great leader. Uh great leaders always make a difference and you made a difference here in Cedar Woolly. And you're going to be an excellent leader, obviously, with the uh continuing work at the cemetery up at Northern State. Which uh as you know, is a, has personal meaning to me as well. And uh I look forward to to working with you on uh your new endeavors in the community. Godspeed.
Thank you, Carl. I appreciate it. I look forward to working with you at the cemetery too. We're gonna get on it um at the end of spring, May-June, okay?
All right, and then moving on to uh Councilman Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is for Chief Tucker and I'm dating myself. But with all his new crew, I'm gonna start calling him Papa Smurf out of the cartoons. Do you remember them, Lynn? Okay, anyway, I I had somebody talk to me yesterday when I was up on the uh Northern State Trails. Walking my dog and they're still fried about the Fourth of July last year. And I know it's, it's nothing we can do about the fireworks, but uh they were still livid. About last July, so and I I don't know what the city can do. I, you know, when you've got hundreds and hundreds of people blowing off fireworks, you can't give everybody tickets. But anyway, I just wanted to pass on their concern. About this, about this coming Fourth of July. So anyway, quite honestly, I'm, I enjoy it and I'm pretty marveled about how much money people are putting up in the air all the time. But uh so anyway, I don't know, uh just you're, probably your complaints, Lynn. You always do, right?
Yep, it, not much we can do with some of it. Um and we were out on the Fourth of July, there were about ten of us serving a search warrant when the worst of the fireworks are going off. And it sounded like a war zone, so.
Oh, what are you, oh, you've got twenty down the street and twenty over the street, uh you know, I mean, it's all, it's everywhere. So anyway, I, there are some people that aren't happy campers, but that's the way it goes.
We just hope for rain.
Okay.
All right, so thank you. So um Glenn, you might be interested in knowing that I actually have had conversation with Dottie Chandler regarding the um blogger rodeo. And she does um hope to do a few of the activities, so we will have something going on. I also met with um Paula from the Chamber along with Monique and then we had discussion about um summer um festivals. So that'll be great to see that again. And I've also um spoke a couple of times with Doug Woods regarding the rodeo. And so um a lot of that is going to depend upon what happens over the next couple of months, what they decide to do. Um but who knows, just depends upon what the governor decides as far as phase four or what are the things that we will be allowed to do. So there will be things that'll be happening over the Fourth of July and there will be possibly one or two festivals during the summer. Um I gotta tell you, I'm working with people just to make this happen because I think it's important. But the city not only has this opportunity to do that, but I think people really need these activities, these festivals and these activities. So we've been doing that. Um I wanted to make mention to you that um I have an invitation out to. Mayor Sexton to come to our next council meeting, the April fourteenth council meeting. And that will be to possibly go over the um project, the homeless, the the Peace Road um homeless shelter project. And answer any questions. Um we will be bringing this to you with an interlocal on the fourteenth and we can have discussion then. Um it looks like that their council did approve it. I think I read that in the paper um and also heard about that. So they are moving forward. I haven't heard anything different. So um you know, barring no moral problems, we will be able to move forward with that. So be thinking about that as well. Um sounds like we have a couple of applications for Ward Three, so uh we'll see what becomes of that. Uh remember that the next council meeting, which is on the seventh of April, is actually going to be uh the um. The interview for the applicants for Ward Three. Um other than that, I just want to extend my thanks again to Brenda. Um Brenda, I have to say, um you know, my, my grandmother worked as a nurse up there at Northern State for many years. And a dear friend of mine, her father was the psychiatrist there for many years. So uh I've grown up with, and also when I was in church, I was in Angel Choir. And we would go up there and sing during the holidays. So I have quite an affinity for Northern State myself. So I can appreciate where you're coming from, absolutely. So very glad to be moving forward with this project.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I know we have a lot of um. Um. The same feelings about the type of work that I do that you have done too before. And um let's just keep our heart and prayers in that aspect with addiction. And that things keep moving forward to help treating addiction and um. We can go from there. Yeah.
Yeah, COVID really accelerated that, that problem and others, but yeah, you're right. Thank you for the work you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's been an absolute pleasure. I thank you for everything.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, so I think that's it for reports. Moving on to public comments. Um I don't know, Doug, did we receive any public comments or? I don't know, Doug, did we receive any public comments or that needs to be read?
No, none to be read. We did have one letter come in from a citizen. But it wasn't really a public comment item. Like, and I think we're going to add that to the additional information for tonight. Just so council had a record of that.
Okay, thank you. And I will go ahead and open this up just in case there are people who are on the line. It's 7:31. I'm gonna open up public comments. I ask if you are making a comment, did you give your name, address, and try to keep it to three minutes? So public comments are open. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this time? Okay, hearing none, 7:31. I will close public comments. So no public hearings tonight, and we do not have any unfinished business. So we'll move on to new business. And Mr. Freiberger, we are on to you with the ADA Transitional Plan, and this is the first reading.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna try to bring my screen up here. Did that work? Let's see. It didn't appear to bring up. Hold on a second.
Yeah, I could see it, Mark, if you need some input.
Okay, so you do have my ADA Transition Plan slideshow there?
I do see it.
Okay, thank you. All right. So since last June, when council authorized us to enter into a contract with Transportation Solutions Incorporated, we have been working on our ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. And I wanted to take a moment and to just introduce the folks that have been working on this so hard. Jennifer Salmon is with us tonight, who is the principal author of the plan itself. I see Kirk Harris is also on. He's the Transportation Solutions Project Manager. We had an ADA Advisory Group that has assisted us through the program. The names were Judy Jones, Christina Sanchez, Michelle Sagato, Eric Johnson, who's with us tonight, and Matthew Despoigny, who's also with us tonight. They've been very essential into the public process and also making suggestions to consultant and staff. And from staff, Doug Merriman, myself, David Lee, the city engineer, and Bill Chambers have all been pretty intricately involved in the whole process. Before I move on, I'd just like to express my thanks to the ADA Advisory Group for the time and effort they've put into reviewing all the documents that we brought forward and their very on track comments and suggestions that have been incorporated into the plan. Just a little background statement right in the front of the plan itself. The city is committed to removing barriers to accessibility and its services programs and activities. To achieve this end, the city has completed a self-evaluation and transition plan, and that's what we're talking about tonight. The background legally for the plan is the Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, and then the follow-on American with Disabilities Act of 1990. And also, we, as an agency, also take federal funds for transportation purposes from that are managed by the Washington State Department of Transportation. We work under what's called the Local Area Guidelines, Local Agency Guidelines, the lag manual. There is a chapter in that manual that covers the ADA requirements. And that is one of the driving factors for us doing this. Because under the supervision of the Department of Transportation, who has adopted their own transition plan as of April 2018, all local agencies working under them that use federal funds must adopt their own plan by April 2021. That's what we're working for right now. So what should an ADA Transition Plan do? It identifies accessibility barriers. It describes methods used to remove accessibility barriers. It provides a barrier removal schedule, and it identifies public officials responsible to implement the plan. The way the document's organized, I'll speak just briefly on this because we'll be going through some parts of this. The barrier types, the four different barrier types we looked at specifically were building facilities, parks, and trails, public right-of-way programs, services, and activities. And each of the particular types of barriers had a four-part look at them to self-evaluation of compliance activity, activities that have been done to date, barrier prioritization and removal recommendations, very cost-re removal estimates, and barrier removal financial plan and schedule for how the city is going to approach dealing with those. There's some additional sections in the plan that talk about barrier removal, monitoring, public outreach, accessibility guidelines, standards and resources, and the various appendices, which are about four inches thick in the particular document we have. Just a few specific paragraphs from the plan itself on the process. The prioritization criteria differs depending on the nature of the accessibility barrier. And each of the departments are recommended to apply this scheme as a guiding prioritization policy for all barrier types. We have high priority barriers, which are identified first and foremost in filed grievances and complaints. We have barriers to accessibility that are identified through public engagement efforts. And the advisory group was key part of that. Barriers to accessibility correlated to planned capital improvements projects, department maintenance projects and policies and procedures of the city. Barriers to accessibility, serving state and local government offices and facilities, transportation, places of public accommodation, as defined in that section of ADA law. Lower priority barriers are services that are not frequently used by the public, barriers to accessibility and public rights, the way facilities stated for demolition or pending renovation, or barriers to accessibility where alternative locations have accessible facilities. So the framework for implementation of the plan, first and foremost, we plan to work within the limits of expected project improvements and existing funding programs for the bulk of the ADA Transition Plan barrier removal efforts. Basically, what that's saying is within our own adopted capital improvement program in our annual budget, we're gonna prioritize removing barriers that fall under under the umbrella of those particular projects. That's been very successful for us to date. And I'll talk more about that in a minute. But that's our first order of attack on this. We do that in terms of a short-term horizon, which is in conjunction with our six-year capital improvement program. That would be 2021 to 26. And then also select projects within the long-term horizon from 2027 and future. Those are discussed as we go through the plan. The intent of our plan is to make reasonable progress towards removal of existing barriers, while also expanding accessibility and city services programs and activities through new capacity. Of course, the unpredictable impact of COVID-19, which we all are so aware of, will likely have some impact on our revenue sources that we've identified and could well delay our plans for dealing with these. So I'm gonna talk about those four particular areas that contain barriers now, the first of which is building facilities. Basically, you can see the list in Table One of the things that we have evaluated. TSI had a subconsultant do this for us. And they were designed to last, which did a very extensive inventory with a priority listing they had for each of these facilities. And that's part of the four inches of data that I mentioned earlier that we have. That looked at all of the various things like restrooms, doors, counters, all of the stuff that makes up how we deal with the public. And basically, it mostly focused on public accessible parts of these facilities. It's not things that are limited strictly to city employees. And it included, of course, City Hall, the Public Safety Building, Fire Station Two, Community Center, Senior Center, the old library, which we hope to repurpose for another city use, the museum, Union Cemetery bathrooms, and the new library. We looked at that briefly as it was still in construction, and we assumed it was going to be built mostly to current standards. But it was a good thing that we did that. The reviewer did pick up a few things that we were able to address with the contractor before they finished the work. Under the cost estimate summary part of that, you see there the list of the same facilities and the dollar estimate for upgrading the facilities or the barriers that were identified in that. That's a pretty big number, $621,000 basically for all of those facilities. I will say the estimates are conservative by nature. They assume full prevailing wage costs on doing the corrections that were identified. And many of these particular corrections that are noted here, things like mirrors that are mounted wrong, toilet seats that are incorrect or too high. A lot of that we'll be able to handle with our annual maintenance budget by our own crew, and the cost should be significantly less. But this does give us a framework for understanding the potential cost of those upgrades. And that'll be true of the other areas we talk about as well. So just kind of to put that in perspective with how the budget looks, we put about $35,000 to $45,000 annually in our 20 to 21 to 26 CIP, our Capital Improvement Program, for these maintenance-type activities. Over a 26-year period, that's about $250,000. That would take care of that much of the $620,000 identified deficiencies. That still would leave an additional $371,000, which at the rate we're hitting that would take another nine years. That doesn't seem insurmountable there. And again, if we're efficient with our use of our own crews, may go better than that. Parks and trails, a little bit more of a problem there. We've listed all the parks on here. I won't go through the list. The one in particular that has the highest number of deficiencies, which is not surprising given its age, is Riverfront Park. They've actually inventoried over a million dollars in improvements needed. I put in parentheses in this part of the table the major items that are problems, and you'll see restrooms appear frequently in that. Riverfront Park in particular, because the old shelters have the restrooms in them for the most part. They're basically too small in dimensions to make them ADA accessible. And so the only way really to do that is to build new facilities to replace what we have there. And that, of course, is a pretty huge cost. You see other varying prices for the other park facilities. It totals up to a million nine for all of those facilities. The challenge with parks and rec is we've been focusing so much on building new facilities, and our CIP continues to do that for the next few years, that we really haven't got much in the way of the budget to handle that. And as you know, we only have two personnel to handle both our building facilities and our parks operations. And so it's challenging on this particular and how we can get there. But we have identified a few thousand dollars a year that we will put into this to handle some of the low-hanging fruit, if you will, on those facilities at least, and some of the accessibility parts that we need to address within parks. So at $11,000 a year, we're looking at a very long time before we would even scratch the surface on that. This is something council's gonna have to look at. Nathan has in the budget this year to do a parks plan. I think we're gonna be deferring that to next year, I understand. But a part of that probably should be to look at in our budgets and how we might be able to do a little better with ADA on the parks and trails part of things. And I do mention up here in this first paragraph that we do not currently have any ADA accessible trails. Cascade Trail, for instance, that's kind of an ad hoc trail. We're using the old Burlington Northern Right-of-Way along there. We don't actually own that, so we're not really responsible for making that accessible. The shared-use paths that we have on Highway 20 and other places, they're new enough that they pretty much are in compliance. So that's just a recap of what the CIP shows for additional parks over the next number of years. We have Memorial Park, Olmsted Park, and the Reed Street Park development that you see. The numbers are that appear, and we are seeking funds from all of those things. Of course, Olmsted does have funding for a major part of those facilities. They're about a million two, as you see. Moving on to public right-of-way, this is the biggest deficiency need that we have in the city based on dollars. This particular table focuses on ADA ramps. Those are curb ramps and corner ramps. I'll show you a couple of pictures in a minute. Basically, combined with rankings on these facilities that the city had already done with additional ones that Jennifer did with TSI. We've ranked all of them in various ways and provided a count. We have 926 of these ramps currently within the city. And you can see the percentages of those that are at various types and classifications. And we've also prioritized those on how we're gonna attack bringing those up to grade. These are pretty important for us to continue aggressively pursuing, and we will do that. So here's just some pictures. These are a couple of, this is a new ramp here, which is fully compliant. This is an older one that's called a blended transition, where you don't have an actual complete ramp like we do on the one on the left side. This is one that is non-compliant, obviously, from a couple reasons. We have the barrier of the curbs themselves on both corners. We have the lifted sidewalk in the middle that provides a barrier. And the tree roots, you can see that have done that. This is just a closer up view of the same thing. This is a missing blended transition at a corner. This is a detectable warning surface, what it should look like, and one that's lacking on the right side. This is a narrow path of travel with an inadequate ramp. And this is a sidewalk section that's just missing. So this particular pie chart talks about those percentages and kind of gives it graphically. I apologize for moving so quickly, but in the interest of time, I want to get through this as fast as possible and give you a moment for some questions. And we can come back to any of these slides that we need to. Again, an analysis of how we're gonna attack that. There's about $600 or $6.6 million in removal costs estimated in the plan. We have within our existing budget and CIP about $480,000 for doing that over the six-year period. That will take care of that amount of the plan. So moving on a little bit more, I mentioned ramps mainly in the previous discussion. We also have about 236,000 feet of sidewalks in our public right-of-way. Of this total, about 86,000 is recent and in good condition. The balance is mostly pre-2006 and has not been rated. We chose in our plan to not rate sidewalks purposefully. You can see the number of footage that's here. It's gonna be another huge number. And our current sidewalk policy in the municipal code requires the adjacent owners to take responsibility for sidewalk repair and maintenance. So, and that's pretty typical of most agencies. And so they are legally responsible for keeping those up. And because our need is gonna be to focus on the things we can do, which are the ramps and the other things we've talked about, we're gonna have to leave this under that agus for the time being. So we have addressed these, the interface with sidewalk and driveways also in our Table 20 in the plan that talks about how we're gonna address some of these deficiencies. Accessible parking is also looked at briefly. We didn't do an extensive inventory on that. But we do have in our plan some parking lot repair to bring those up in terms of markings and the like to make them accessible. In particular, we're looking at doing the Memorial Park parking lot. And as we do that, we'll update the spaces to make them compliant with ADA. uh, we'll we'll update the spaces uh, to make them compliant with ADA. Uh, we also have uh, in accordance with the plan requirements put together and an accessible pedestrian signal policy that's published on our website. And um, as I mentioned before, uh, we've got in our CIP uh, some funding for removing burials barriers in the public right of way.
Mark, I'm just uh, real quick question. So when you were talking about the ADA parking, um, I am curious if there is uh, some sort of a requirement, state requirement or regulation that states you have to have so many within a city or a town. Um, I do, I do know that as one um, request that we do hear from people is that they wish there was more ADA parking downtown. Um, I I think I'd appreciate your thoughts on that and what you may know, so I can share that when those calls come in.
Yes, the plan does address that somewhat briefly. We didn't have them uh, do uh, an actual engineering review of that. But that's something we look at closely when we uh, when we do projects around town and make sure that we upgrade. So for instance, Memorial Park with we will look at that and make sure we have adequate spaces in there when we're done with our uh, ceiling project that we do this summer. Uh, just uh, in terms of our on-street parking downtown, we are in compliance, generally speaking, it would require so many spaces per block. And we generally speaking have that in place. Uh, this, this is a good segue though, uh, for what we will be using as priorities when we look at barrier removal. Uh, the first thing in the uh, matrix that I mentioned earlier in the presentation was complaints uh, and requests that come in. We will look at those as a priority. So when we're doing our annual review of of the plan, uh, we will take those kind of uh, inputs from the public and as far as possible, we will incorporate that in our planning for the the next year's project. And I probably should mention before I leave sidewalks that uh, what we've done. I didn't give you all of the exhibits that exist in the plan, but uh, Jennifer did a really good job of uh, putting some mapping in there that shows uh, the arterial streets that we have in our CIP and and putting a fifty foot berry uh, fifty foot uh, corridor around those. And we've listed those as a priority. When we do a project, we will update the ramps. And in in cases, we will do some sidewalk work as well. Of course, we do as much as we can. Uh, leaving most of the sidewalks, however, uh, to the adjacent property owners. So thank you for that question. So the last part of this is program services and activities. Uh, Jennifer put together a survey that was given to all of our employees right at the start of the process. All of our supervisors anyway and lead personnel throughout of all all of our city departments. And basically that thing was a was a a very big task for each of them to take on. And it basically in question format, uh, addressed all of the things that we should be taking into account under the requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act. And uh, there are things like, you know, uh, who is the ADA coordinator for the city? And how do I uh, get accommodation with uh, vision impairment and those kind of things? And so uh, we learned a lot from that survey alone, just on what we didn't know. And so in 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 terms of the programmatic part of this, that's going to be one of our priorities is is a an education effort with all of our staff. The survey itself was uh, very eye eye opening because the questions themselves often told you what you should be doing. And if you didn't know about it, uh, now you do. But there will be further training to do in in the the form of our luncheon learns and other activities that we have in the city once COVID uh, permits those to happen again. So I probably got ahead of myself just a little bit. We uh, did the audit, just as I mentioned, uh, and pretty well talked through the things that are on this page. Um, we also did a review of the municipal code and the city public works department standards. The code itself uh, pretty much references uh, current uh, national state and uh, Cedar Willie Municipal items uh, for building code. And that's mostly compliant, just by the nature of that, the current uh, international building code, for instance, is uh, if you build to that, you're pretty much compliant. There are some differences, some nuances on uh, the age of the uh, the uh, ADA Act uh, requirements itself. Like you basically have to meet the higher standard. And uh, most of the time that, pretty much all the time when you when you are designing, when the architects design those uh, to the current standards, you're going to be in compliance with the ADA. Uh, the Public Works Department Standards, which is uh, which is the bible that we use for our own projects and development in the city. Uh, needs a little work. It was not in bad shape, but uh, there are items that we have identified to uh, bring it up to the current language that's used in the the American Disabilities Act. And we've planned to do that over the course of the next year.
So I'm going to interrupt you just a minute because I want to, we're coming up on the eight o'clock hour. And so if there isn't any objection from the council, um, I'd like for us to move to eight thirty, move the meeting on to eight thirty. Is there an objection regarding that? Okay, thank you. Very good. Thank you, Mike. Continue.
And I will attempt to complete much before that. So this next page is just another page from the transition plan itself. It talks about uh, the programmatic barrier prioritization, how we will do that. And we have short term items which are kind of the macro level administration compliance requirements that I've already talked about. And we plan to implement those within a year of publication of the transition plan. Long term, maybe department specific modifications to meet programs and services. Um, there may be some structural things that they have to do in terms of how they how they handle things like um, uh, call centers uh, to for language uh, translation, uh, impaired hearing and those kind of things, which may take a little more work. So um, our ADA coordinator is is Christine Salsina, and she's been doing a great job of taking complaints as they've coming come in and logged them. And uh, we're tuning up uh, our documentation on how we do that and our reporting. And uh, we do need to get her some training. And so we'll be looking to do that, to uh, upgrade her skill sets to handle that particular critical role. Uh, we have already updated our ADA grievance grievance procedure uh, to meet all of the current requirements of the ADA. And uh, then we will, as I mentioned before, work with all the departments to make them aware of the city ADA grievance procedure, how to access it and how to provide it in alternative formats if it's needed. And to do the training for the procedure as well as the other parts identified in the act. We will also work with all departments to make them aware of public notice under the ADA, how to access it, where to publicly post it and how to provide it in alternative formats. And as I mentioned, train department staff, uh, public notice requirements. And uh, create uniform request for accommodation form that can be used for all departments. As I mentioned before, we've already put in place an accessible pedestrian signal policy. We don't currently operate any pedestrian signals other than our push buttons we have at several locations around town. This more relates to the um, more um, elaborate ones you see on the highway, which are the maintenance responsibility of the Department of Transportation at this time. So the longer term items under the programmatic carrot characterization are listed here. I don't think I need to go into any great deal on these things. Just down to costs, uh, the costs for this are relatively minor, uh, about twenty four thousand is the estimate for completing these efforts in the city. And we actually uh, have put in the bu- budget for twenty uh, twenty two and and on about five thousand a year to bring these things up to date. A lot of this is just staff time, uh, so the actual cost is going to be pretty much absorbed in our our existing budget. And before I leave the transition plan, I I did ask Jennifer uh, to be prepared to speak to this because she knows this part uh, probably much, well, definitely much better than I do. So if any of council members have any questions on the programmatic part, I uh, would be uh, inviting Jennifer to answer those for you. Yeah. Let me just finish the one more page I have and then we'll go back to that if you choose. So barrier removal monitoring is a is a key part of the activities that are recommended by the plan. Uh, so to ensure an implementation of the plan, it's recommended the city establish an annual review and update process to track ADA barrier removal across all of our facilities, buildings, parks, public right of way and its programs and services and activities. And uh, as a part of our ongoing effort for public outreach, uh, we would share that on our our ADA transition project webpage. So and that holds the official responsible for implementation of the ADA plan to coordinate this effort in cooperation with the city staff. And by the way, that right now is my position has that responsibility. Uh, just if you're curious about that. So I wanted to speak just a little bit to the public outreach efforts that have already been done. Uh, we we've been uh, quite active throughout the process. And again, uh, with a very, very professional efforts of TSI and Jennifer in particular. Uh, we've updated our webpage. Bill Chambers has been instrumental in that and has been very responsive on every request for update and has made some some great suggestions on how that could be implemented. Uh, we've done online surveys, uh, two of those. And we've had a decent response to those and and their uh, recommendations have been incorporated into the transition plan. Uh, we've also published print and other web based publications. In particular, we used uh, the City Scene Magazine uh, to promote uh, both the surveys uh, and then then the public workshop, which is the next item listed there, which we had had some good input from that as well. And then, of course, as I mentioned before, our very vital ADA advisory group was a huge part of the process. Uh, just just a slide to show you some of the things that appear in detail in the transition plan. Uh, from the public outreach and and from the input that we got from the ADA transition, uh, ADA advisory group. Uh, we came up with this particular slide, which shows some of the prioritizations uh, we are doing uh, for various things. Uh, and they're shown by how the input came in. We had survey uh, information in the light blue. We had Survey Monkey in purple. Virtual workshop identified some things. And um, and so they'll show up on the map here. And those are enumerated in the plan itself. So again, I kind of spoke to that earlier. Uh, we are prioritizing our efforts on barriers that have been identified in our workshops, our surveys and the eighty, the advisory group uh, things. And I'll just say to that, um, the group uh, mentioned in particular, and this also came up in some of the public outreach we did, the intersection at state and township. And I believe I've mentioned this in council before, but we have as a result of that included upgrading those corners at that intersection in our uh, Wicker Road overlay project that we're doing this summer. And uh, we're going to attack that pretty aggressively and take care of that. That that was one that was obviously much on a lot of people's minds. And uh, Matt in particular mentioned that one and then another one down at uh, Ferry and Puget. We're going to try to do that one as well if the funding stretches far far enough. And the second bullet is high ranking barrier types. Uh, this is things like fixed objects, blocking path of travel, overgrown vegetation, that kind of stuff. Uh, prioritizing barriers uh, near the following high ranking locations. Uh, this was again identified in the public process, grocery stores, retail shopping centers, transit centers, bus stops, uh, routes, senior center, elderly care facilities and school, schools and libraries. Doing those before we do barriers near other locations as far as possible. And uh, consider establishing an dedicated annual budget reserve that might help fund uh, these projects. Now, we haven't done that in our current uh, twenty twenty one, twenty two budget, because obviously the plan wasn't completed when we were preparing that. But it's something we will want to consider uh, in future budgets, having some funds set aside. In particular, uh, beyond what we normally budget uh, to handle uh, those kind of community identified uh, issues that uh, that are similar to what we're doing at state and township. And to continue to utilize the Cedar Project website uh, page and our survey platform as a tool for future public engagement. So that's basically the presentation. And so I know that was a lot of stuff to to try to absorb in a hurry. But again, the the turn transition plan itself and all of the appendices, if you are interested in the details of the of the analysis that was done by uh, Design to Last uh, are all available on the website. And I gave that information on how to reach that uh, in the memorandum presenting this tonight. And so I'll open this up for questions now. And and before that, Jennifer, is there anything that I missed that you think you would like to highlight uh, before we go on?
I can say that with working with multiple agencies on ADA transition plans, I think Cedar Willie is following all the best practice best practices, especially with its ADA advisory group. So just a big thumbs up to the city for choosing that approach.
Thank you, Jennifer. Would anybody from the advisory group like to speak about this? Eric or Matthew? Thank you. Are there any questions from council?
I I'm sorry, I try to unmute myself. Listen, Matthew. I do, I just thank you for having you on the group. Um, I've never been on the government before. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew, and thank you for participating. And I I should probably emphasize also, uh, it was uh, uh, under the recommendations of of the guidelines that the transition plan was prepared. Uh, we did specifically uh, request or or seek out folks that were members of the disabled community uh, as uh, to be at least fifty one percent of the advisory group. And uh, and we were, we were fortunate to have a a number of people from that community that participated, Matthew being one. And again, their input was really vital to the whole process. So any questions from council on this?
I have one, but I I think you addressed it, but it, did you, is it correct that the buildings that the public doesn't use, like the sewer department in different places, are different ADA rules in the public, like city hall and libraries and stuff?
That is correct, uh, Kevin. Uh, anything that's not accessible to the public doesn't have to meet uh, the standards. Anything that is is uh, is used for a public meetings or stuff like that would be. So for instance, when we first uh, prepared the scope for the transition plan and the and the and the self evaluation, we didn't remember to to include the uh, fire training room. Uh, in the course discussions on that, Bill brought up quite appropriately that uh, we have um, training for um, the public that happens in their first aid, safety, training and updates like that. And so we went back and scrambled and 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 incorporated that. Uh, and that particular facility will also uh, technically have to be upgraded to ADA standards. The sinks in there, the two bathrooms that are publicly accessible, uh, the doors, the 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 tables and those kind of things like that. So anyway, that that is an important consideration because uh, things that that are normal employee uh, accessible things do not require uh, ADA accessibility. It's still a good idea to build them that way if you're building a new uh, because that could change in the future. And in fact, I could see that changing. But current standards do not require that.
Thanks.
Mark, Councilman Allen, just a couple of questions. Uh, you know, the ADA is a very important act. Uh, but it's all federal mandates. How much reimbursement is offered to us? If any?
Basically zero. This is one of those unfunded mandates that uh, that we often face, uh, something like that gets this gets passed. And I mentioned to you the enabling acts on this. I think uh, our our legislators recognize this. This first started in in uh, the seventies and then nineteen ninety was the ADA Act itself that kept making the uh, requirements more stringent and rightfully so. Uh, it's very important that things be accessible to the public, all of the public. But they did not at first put in a timeline for doing this. Uh, it's actually It's actually recently that Federal Highways has upped the bar on that and said, well, if you're using federal money, you have to, you have to at least have a transition plan in and, and, and have a fiscal plan for updating your facilities. That's minimum now for having federal fund or being eligible for federal funding. I'm not aware that they've turned anybody away yet, but I'm pretty sure that's going to be. Well, I do know that on this current round of federal applications we're doing, it may not show up at the SCOG level, but by the time it gets to the federal level, they'll be asking that question. Have you prepared your transition plan? So we're just getting in under the wire, really. If you, this is a first reading tonight and I'm composing adoption, if you're comfortable with the plan at the April fourteenth meeting, and that'll get us under the wire with a little bit of time to spare.
Any more questions for Mark? Okay, Mark, excellent presentation, very thorough. And also I want to extend on behalf of the city our thanks to all of those who sat on the ADA board. I know that it was quite a time commitment and and actually your words were very powerful because you brought to it your experience, which makes it a more complete plan in my opinion, because you, you're living it. So I really wanted to thank you for being a part of the board. And Mark, thank you for heading that up. Greatly appreciate all the work that you have done on this. So as Mark said, this is a first read and it will be back April fourteenth for your approval. Moving on, just one last thing, I have what a discussion item. And this is regarding the Skagit Headwaters. I received a call and it was a great call, lots of information from Richard Brocksmith of the Skagit Watershed Council, who requested that the City of Seadrill Willie write a letter to express our concerns about the proposed copper mine in the Upper Skagit watershed. It's located in a place known as the Donut Hole. It's unprotected territory there. And it's surrounded by protected territory. So a bit interesting that, that, that that exists. I don't know if you read about it in the paper, but it was in the paper. Anyway, I am hoping, I, I hope that you had a chance to read the materials and read the letters. I would really like a letter to go out from us as a city, as a council. So I'm actually looking for your input or any thoughts. If you had a chance to read through the materials and you also know that this, this copper mine is going in actually on the other side of the border. However, it does concern us because it's a possibility of an active copper mine, even though it's many miles up the river. My hope is that here tonight, we can have that discussion and we can send a letter not only to our officials, but I'd also like to send one to the B C Southwest Mines Division up in Canada. The impact of this mine, it could, that it could have on the Skagit River. I have heard each and every single one of you talk about the beauty here in Skagit County, especially here in Seadrill Willie, and how you want to preserve that. I am not aware if any of you know of the twenty fifteen gold mine accident that happened on the Colorado River. Sludge from that gold mine went into the river. And five years later, it is still a murky orange gold color. And this has sifted down into other streams and into the ecosystem. And that is something that we really want to avoid here, which is why I'm asking you to consider giving your input. I don't know if you have any questions regarding this. But if you took a look at the material, you could see that this is something that's really important. And there's been some powerful letters and also a resolution written by our neighbors all around us, those who live in the Skagit Valley. And also a letter from Jenny Durkin from Seattle. So we do have it within our ability to make a statement and to be heard. And I'm hoping that you're willing to do that. I did not know a whole lot about copper mines until after I spoke to Mr. Brocksmith and I started doing my own research. And I was appalled at the kind of devastation that happens with copper mines and especially when there's accidents. Copper can be very toxic in the water and it could be detrimental to our salmon. So and then also our ecosystem. So I am wondering if anybody has any thoughts or any input? Or I would really like to hear from you regarding this so that we can put together a letter and send it off.
Remind mayor?
Yes. Yes.
Is there anything that prevents us from making a resolution at this time that states City of Seadrill Willie is completely against this, I, I'm sorry, I don't know the name of this mine, but we're against this mine within the regions of the Skagit River tributaries.
Yeah, we could do something much along the line of what the Swenamish did. I could put that resolution together, have it put together, and I can bring it back on the fourteenth.
I think that's incredibly important since the Skagit River is such an important salmon habitat. We really need to take action to try to prohibit this.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you for those words. It's very true.
If I might, I'd support, I don't have any particular ends or out, but I'd support the mayor writing, writing the letter to the different entities and that's all just being signatories to it. And she's done some research, let her write the letter and let us take a look at it and then everybody sign on to it.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Lloyd.
Madam Mayor. I'm your most conservative member of your council, probably. I, I'm sorry, I agree with you on certain things, but are we going to scream about Three Mile Island? Are we just posturing? Do we dictate to British Columbia and Canada what they can or can't do? You know, our job is to run the city. I, I know it sounds great. It looks great. But you know, we're not the city of Seattle that gets to dictate to everybody what they want to do. So I, I, I don't know. I just think the, the state and the federal and the provincial government of Canada or B C and Canada should be dealing with this issue. And maybe I think we should just stay involved.
Interesting enough, the, the agency up there that does the public hearing has actually left the public hearing, hearing open, asking for those individuals, those entities that live downriver of this copper mine, submit our own statements. So it's not something that we've sought to do. It's something that actually has kind of been requested of us. And, you know, I, I hear where you're coming from. But also if something were to happen, it does impact our city. It impacts livelihoods here if something were to happen. So I think it's a precaution in a statement, we have the ability to say something now. And I think that's important, but I do appreciate what you're saying and sharing.
We do not want, we don't want railroad cars bringing gasoline down our tracks. And we don't want nuclear power plants and we don't want this. I, I, you know, it just seems like we're all running around with our hair on fire. And, you know, the, the sky is falling. I, you know, I'm, I'm, no, I'm not being against you. I never disagree with you, mayor. You know, but it just seems like we're just over, to me, it's overreaction. But anyway, I, I understand it does impact this eventually or potentially could. That's, that's the whole word, you know?
I think you hit the right thing with impact. And I think it could impact us, but I think we have the ability to have a greater impact by stating something. So that's why I brought it before you. Um, Councilwoman Kinser, I've cut you off twice and I apologize.
No, that's quite all right, mayor. Um, Councilmember Allen, I encourage you to really do your research on the subject. The impact of copper brines on the environment downriver on the, the fish habitat from the sites downriver are incredibly severe. And so I really, really encourage you, Councilmember Allen, to do your research on this. This isn't a, a, a fly-by-night decision or request on this. It, it could tremendously impact our salmon habitat, which is such a great livelihood for our county and our area. And so please, please do some digging on this subject. I encourage you.
Yes, Councilwoman Kesty.
Thank you. I'm very familiar with the Colorado Mine Accident, and I don't want to see that happen here. So you have my full support to write an opposition letter.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Owen.
I, I go along with, with the others that I think it would be awesome for you to write it, write up a, a good letter and for all the council to sign it to show our concerns. And I don't think it's a good idea to be running their wastewater into Skagit River because it will affect the habitat and it'll probably affect the drinking water in the long run. So I think it'd be great if you could write up a, a good letter and we would all sign it.
All right. Thank you.
I'd like to add, you said there's several entities want to hand it to, so make sure you send it to all of them.
Yes, I will. All right. Councilman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, as the only ward that touches the Skagit River, Ward Six, I am, my support is unequivocal to what the documentation I saw to protecting our water. As we had the P U D discussions earlier, forty percent of our drinking water comes out of the Skagit. And I am also interested in protecting all five species of salmon that run through the Skagit. The, our winter and summer steelhead, our bull trout and our cutthroat trout that run through the Skagit. We have a very unique opportunity here and we must do everything to safeguard it for its economic development, for the beauty that it brings. It's, it's our quality of life. And we've all have experienced either personally or through some sort of media seeing the devastation that happens when there is a release from, from these mines. I think it is completely appropriate as the neighbors, and we are connected to Canada and to British Columbia as all the way to Anacortes. We are all connected by this river. And we must do what we can now to make our position known. And again, I'm unequivocally supportive of this letter. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other, any other input or questions or comments? Okay, if not, I greatly appreciate your input and hearing what you have to say. Yeah, I think it's our responsibility to stand up and to say, people do need to take a look. I did receive actually from Mr. Chambers, a couple of websites which deal with the copper mines. And I will make sure that those get out to you. I thank you, Mr. Chambers, for sending those to me. If there is nothing else, then our next council meeting is going to be April seventh. It's a study session. However, we will be doing, hopefully, interviews of applicants for Ward Three. So Brenda, one last shout out to you. We send our love. We thank you so much for serving. And I know this isn't the end. We'll be seeing you and I know you'll continue to have an impact on our community. So thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate working with all of you. It's been an extreme pleasure.
All right. Thank you. All right. If there isn't anything else for the good of the order, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.